They're going to see what we did for this unit. My thing was on the whole time.
I call this meeting to order for Tuesday, June 13th, 2023. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Susan Payne.
Here.
Mayor Potem Dusty Wright.
Here.
Commissioner Sharon McDonald.
Here.
Commissioner Josh Roden.
Here.
Commissioner Stephen Burnett.
Here.
Commissioner Carl Melton is absent. Commissioner Nick Paul is absent. Acting City Manager Stephanie Hernandez, City Attorney Ashley Smith, the clerks present, Mr. Mayor, Madam Mayor, we have a quorum.
Mister, madam, whatever. Just kidding. I'm sorry. That was a joke because I will not answer to that. Anyway, all right, we're going to get started with the invocation given by, welcome back to Alamogordo, given by Pastor Charles Hanks of First Baptist Church, and the pledge led by Commissioner McDonald.
I want to also say that retired police officer, so as part of our prayer, we're going to pray protection over these officers that are in here tonight as well.
Thank you.
Father, we first of all acknowledge that all of us have been put in a position of authority, that that's you, Lord, that's put us in place. Your word tells us that that all of those in authority, that you have allowed and put them in place, and we're to lift them up in prayer as we're doing now. But we also pray for them, the prayer that Solomon prayed, having to lead a people, that you would give them wisdom, and you would give them knowledge, so they know how to rule and take care of the things and responsibilities that they have. I pray over this meeting tonight specifically, Lord, help us all to be quick to hear and not so quick to speak, that we would understand each other, that everything would be done for the best of everyone involved. And again, that will require wisdom and knowledge from you. And Father, we take this opportunity to pray over these officers in this room right now. I pray your hand of protection on them. I pray for you to give them wisdom. And Father, those split second decisions that are so critical, that you would clear their minds, that you would clear their hearts, that you would calm them, and help them to be able to make those decisions. And we thank you for them. And Lord, send people into their lives that will let them know that they are supported and loved. And so, Father, we just thank you for this opportunity to do the things that we're going to do tonight for your people, and we'll give you the honor and glory for it in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Hanks. Okay, we are going to move on to the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
I have a motion from Commissioner McDonald. Do I have a second?
A second.
A second from Commissioner Burnett. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes five zero. That sounds so weird, doesn't it? Okay. We're going to move on to presentations. We have two tonight. The first one is John Bailey. Are you here?
Yeah.
Okay, John Bailey. And he is with the Alliance for Regional Military Support, or the Arms Committee, if you'll come up to the front. And I just want to remind you that you will have 10 minutes. Okay?
Mayor, we appreciate the opportunity to come up and present to the Alamogordo Council, and want to talk about what we've done with the Alliance for Regional Military Support over the last six months as we get ready to renew our opportunity, and make sure that we've engaged Alamogordo, and make sure that going forward, we have engaged. As support for our military, we have a lot of respect for the service. So we want to start by saying thank you to all the police officers out here for your service every day. It's as important as our military service. You take care of us every day. So thank you very much. We appreciate it. See if I can figure out how to use the buttons now. All right. So recent accomplishments that we've gone through as Alliance for Regional Military Support, just to make sure everybody understands, what we do is we're a group of folks that work with all the municipalities throughout the region here. So we have Alamogordo, Otero County, Las Cruces, Dona Anna, El Paso, and El Paso County, and Horizon. And what we do is we support all of our military installations here locally to make sure that we keep them strong, and that we don't really have to fear any BRACs or anything coming up that would potentially close them. So we keep a pulse on everything going on within the military, Army, Air Force, Navy at White Sands. So we work very closely with them. Some of the things that we've done, we've led a regional delegates to Washington DC, to the Air Force Association. We had a group from Alamogordo, and we joined them out of El Paso to support the Air Force. And we have an Air Force enlisted that goes out with them, who's retired out there. So he understands that and works with that. Some of the MilCon, military construction money that's been received. We've got a one-company satellite fire station for 6.4 million. Las Cruces, we got a substation for 6.4 million. Missile Assembly Building and Planning Design of 3.6. And at Holloman, we got, we were able to advocate for the high-speed test track for 5 million. And then the F-16 Formal Training Unit, the planning and designing, at 4.1 million. So those are some of the things that we've advocated with not only the New Mexico delegation in DC, but we also work very closely with the Texas delegation, and have got them all working together and understand that this region is critical to the military as a whole. Each one of them by themselves is not as critical as the whole group. So we work very closely. So we've got a coalition of our congressional folks that are working together on these type of things. We've engaged the Medical Centers of America and William Beaumont to discuss STEM programs for defense-related industries, including air and space. So we're working with them to really try to build some STEM programs within our military that they're reaching out to the schools to help support those military or those STEM opportunities there, and getting engaged with the folks there. We've engaged with Joint Modernization Command, again, to support the STEM and the STEM programs in regional. They're very excited about the opportunity to come up and work with the Alamogordo School District for the 2023-2024 school year to provide some insight of what the military does for STEM, and why STEM is so important with it. We continue to meet with Defense Health Agency to discuss the whole health, military health in both Alamogordo, at Holloman, what has to happen here in the city of Alamogordo, as well as Las Cruces and El Paso there. We participated in the New Mexico Land Commissions meeting. What we're really wanting to do is make sure we understand encroachment issues. That is one of the biggest issues that the Pentagon has with military installations, is when we start building commercial or private buildings on or real close to military installations. It devalues the space out there. So we want to make sure that we understand encroachment, we understand where we're at with it. We're in good shape here in New Mexico with all the space that we have. Developed talking points for community leaders regarding our military regionally. We met with the National Direction Director of the Transition Assistance Program, the TAP program, to talk about how we can help place more of our soldiers and our airmen that are getting out on a regular basis here in the local and the regional area. How do we keep them here and start building our folks from there? And then we've completed a veterans assessment to determine some of the better needs that our veterans have, and what can we do to help support that. We've done that in El Paso, Las Cruces, and we're working that in Alamogordo. Continued meet with DOD leadership. We meet with them on a regular basis. Our consultants that we utilize out of Washington DC, meet with four-stars and the secretaries of each one of the military branches on a regular basis. So we get that type of information from them on a regular basis. And then we work with our elected officials on the House Armed Services to make sure that we've got money in the MilCon, that we're really taking care of the priorities for local. And I'm going to ask Command Sergeant Major Retired Lance Lair to carry on from here.
Thank you. Ms. Mayor, Mayor Potem, Commissioners, my name's Lance Lair for the record. So the way forward, and I'm not going to read to you what's on the slide, but I am going to tell you that this, our ability to reach into the building, that five-sided building, and our ability to get the contacts and the people that we need to meet with to forward the agendas that you and the staff provide is the power of arms. That's really where the power resides. Our consulting group is made up of all retired, four-stars, three-stars, SESs, you know, and names that you would know. And so that's the power that this brings, and the reason we ask that you continue to work with us, and to pursue improvement in the areas that you see before you. Specifically, one of the things we're doing right now is we're working, we've got it in place in El Paso County. We're working with Dona Anna County. We'd like to do the same here. We want to bring doctors in uniforms out to talk to students, to teach classes. We're actually having our docs from William Beaumont come out and teach classes in uniform to the medical magnet schools. Powerful. It creates a desire for kids to want to not just serve, but to get into STEM, if that makes sense. That's one of the initiatives we've got going on. So as you can see, we want, what we want to do is have you designate for us, or have you allow us to continue working with our, with the acting city manager, with the staff, and get the input from you through the staff to us, so that we can get after what you as commissioners want to do in regards to Holloman, in regards to the area here. And with that, I'll ask if there are any questions.
I have some questions. Does anybody else have any questions? Okay. I have a couple. So I'm looking at your slide. It says "Way Forward." The last two, how long have we had this contract now?
This is the first renewal of the contract, so we've had for two years now.
For two years. Okay. I do remember when we first voted for that. And I do have a couple of questions, but first let me ask, can you tell me how much Las Cruces contributes?
They're at the same level. They're at, all of our cities, well, El Paso and El Paso County are higher, but all of our counties in New Mexico, Las Cruces, Dona Anna.
10,000.
They're at 10,000 a year.
Okay, okay. So the last two on this slide are Develop City of Alamogordo Priority List as it relates to Holloman Air Force Base. Okay, can you elaborate on that just a little bit?
Sure. One of the things that we really want to do is we get priority list, or we get understanding from, you know, we work with Main Gate and some of the other folks here, and we get information from there. What we haven't been able to get is Alamogordo's participation in our meetings. And that's really what we're looking for, so that we understand exactly what the city of Alamogordo is looking for in relation to Holloman. So what we do is we talk with the commander at Holloman, and we get their priority list, and then we bounce it against the Alamogordo priority list to make sure that we're working in conjunction with them, so that we're all trying to take care of it. One of the examples are off-post housing. One of the things that we've heard is that one of the biggest issues with stationing of new airmen here at Holloman is, do they have off-post housing? Can we accommodate those? So we make sure those type of things are known by the county, the city, so that those are things that can be addressed outside the gates.
Okay. So I will tell you that I've jumped on a few of those calls, and I haven't found them in terms of our city to be super productive.
Okay.
So if I were to support this, the renewal of this, I would expect a lot more for what we get, because I have not, that's why I don't get on them, because I'm, you know, I don't just wear this hat. I actually have another job too, and I'm like super busy. And I don't have time to, with all due respect, to listen to stuff. Like, I need it to be relevant for us, or I'm not, I'm just not going to take the time to do it. So I would like to see more of that if we support this. And then advocate for defense contractors to use Alamogordo facilities for training and testing. Could you elaborate on that a little bit more?
So we, on a regular basis, meet with the defense industry. We have a lot of contacts about it. And what we do is we work with them to understand who's at Holloman already, and do they have a presence here? If they don't, we work with them to try to develop a presence here, to figure out what kind of training or testing that they could use Holloman for, to actually start putting more people into the location here.
Okay. Yeah, okay. So both of those are super important to me, and anybody that knows me knows that I probably talk about both of them ad nauseam, because I do think they're important. But I would expect, at least just, you know, just as one of, unfortunately, five right now, if we're going to do this, I would expect, I expect a lot more of that, because we do need housing here, and we need it here desperately. And I, you know, I've heard everybody talk a great talk, but not one person has walked the walk from where I'm sitting. And so I would expect a lot more of that. And I am really good about accountability.
Fantastic.
So I, you know, knowing that we've had this conversation, if we decide to support this, I'm probably going to hold your feet to the fire with that. Yes?
So I have been working with this contract. We are wrapping up the third year of the contract. The contract originally was written 10,000 a year for three years. I redid the contract for the exact same reason, for accountability. It won't be a 10,000 upfront. It'll be quarterly payments based on the report. And I just spoke with them that I would like to be involved in the meetings, especially at first, so I could understand, and then maybe have a sit-down or come back to commission and say, what exactly, here's what I was told. What exactly are your priorities, or what can I communicate with them?
Okay. Yeah, I feel much better about that. I think that, I think that if we're to do this, that we definitely need, we need something, because like I said, I have jumped on a few of those meetings, and then I kind of went click, because I'm like, I don't want to hear about, you know, not that they're not important, and that's great, but I think, I think if they were structured more where everybody had an opportunity to kind of chime in, and I just, I didn't feel that. And that's okay. That's all right. But I think now, going forward, because we've done this for a few years, maybe we all understand, you know, what our expectations are.
And ma'am, the one thing that I would ask for our assistance is that we actually dedicate somebody from Alamogordo to be part of it, so that we can reach out to them and say, okay, here's what we're hearing from Holloman. How's that affecting Alamogordo? Because that's kind of also been a little bit of the issue, is that we haven't gotten the responses that we need from folks here. So, you know, we 100% agree with you. I mean, both Lance and I, coming up tonight, talked about, we haven't been engaged as much in Holloman as we actually should be with that. But we also need the commitment from Alamogordo to make sure that we have the right person. And if Ms. Hernandez is it, it'd be great, because she's been fabulous to work with to get this thing set up, that we can, when we hear something, because there's a lot of times where we'll get a phone call that says, hey, here's something we're hearing, and we just need to have the right person to be able to call and say, okay, you know, Stephanie, here's what we're hearing. What does that mean for Alamogordo? And how do we help that next step with that?
Right. No, I think that's good. I think that's good. And I agree that, I don't know how, I said to somebody today, you multitask better than anybody I've ever met. My brain is just not as quick as it used to be. I'll just say due to COVID. How's that? Anyway. Okay, so does anybody else have any questions? No? And do we need to act on this, or what do we need to do?
It's a presentation.
It is, right.
But as long as we have your approval to move forward, to continue to work with them, like I said, it's going to be a $10,000 contract as opposed to a $30,000 contract, which is, of course, in our authority, so.
Because we're going to do it. Okay, I see what you're saying. Okay, perfect. That sounds good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Looking forward to it. Thank you.
Alrighty.
We're not going to bring that back as an action item? We're just going to give direction to staff, or what?
So you will see it on a budget resolution. And if you want, we can highlight it back. I'm willing to do whatever you want.
Well, just normally, we do a presentation, and you bring it back as an action item for us to approve or disapprove of it. But I mean, granted, it's only 10 grand, but that's how we used to do it in the past.
If that's how you want us to bring it. I mean, we have a lot of contracts that we don't bring forward, but I mean, if you want us to bring this one forward, I have no problem bringing it forward next meeting, if that's what the majority.
It's up to you. I don't care. I just noticed a lot of things have been going to state contract.
You're good, Bennett.
If we bring it back as an action item, it's just going to take a couple of minutes to vote on it, right?
Yeah. That way, it's all legit.
I didn't hear you, Mayor Potem.
I mean, I agree with, we can just bring it back as a.
Yeah, we can, I'll put it on an action item on the next.
That's kind of what our job is, is to approve this kind of stuff, so, you know. Anyway.
I'll bring it back.
Okay. Alrighty. Next, we have Alamogordo Main Street Executive Director Nolan. And I always mess up your last name, so I'm not even going to say, Oheda?
You got it. You got it. Say it louder with confidence. You got it.
I'll work on that.
Okay. Mayor, Commissioners, hello, hello. So I'm going to start off by introducing my personal hero over here. This is Eduardo. Eduardo is with New Mexico Main Street. You know, in this next iteration of our contract, you know, I worked with the city manager and now the acting city manager extensively to kind of redo the way we were doing our contract. So I wanted to bring Eduardo down, who is our organizational specialist with New Mexico Main Street, to kind of give you guys a bit of a, like a review on how all of this Main Street stuff works in partnership with our government, and so. And then he's going to be here, because he's way smarter than me, to answer any questions you guys have. So just want to introduce you, Eduardo Martinez.
Mayor Payne, members of the Commission, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. Just want to say thanks, first of all, to the city of Alamogordo for supporting Alamogordo Main Street in the revitalization of your historic downtown. I think I was here in this community pretty much once a month for three years when the city first applied for the Main Street designation to help launch this program, and I'm happy to be back in Alamogordo again. I also want to thank the Board of Directors of Alamogordo Main Street for the amazing work that they're doing, and that they have picked up since sort of things dropped off with the economy due to COVID as well. Usually, when we have new city-elected officials, we make ourselves available to speak, to speak to them, just make ourselves available to answer questions. So I'll be brief, and then turn it back over to Nolan for the rest of his presentation. But the Main Street program resides in the state's Economic Development Department. There are 30 Main Street communities, 12 arts and cultural districts, in which those communities are building their economy around arts, culture, and the creative economy. And then another urban frontier and Native American communities that are basically startups, a single project for about 18 months. The Main Street program is a public-private partnership between the state, the local government, and a economic development organization in each community. And that's really codified by two key documents. There's a biannual MOU that the city, the state, and Alamogordo Main Street would sign, that basically says, here's what we're committing to do to revitalize the historic downtown district as well. There's a second document that is really the procurement tool that the. There's a second document that is really the procurement tool that the city needs to transfer the resources to Alamogordo Main Street. This is a scope of services contract between the city and Alamogordo Main Street. New Mexico Main Street is not a party to that. I do write the first drafts of those contracts, so if you have questions about those, I'll be happy to talk about that. Usually, that is set up in two separate elements. One is the core services, which Alamogordo Main Street has to provide, and that's basically what you're providing the majority of your funding for. And then there's a second part of the contract, which is the additional services, and those should change every year. Part of the partnership is that the city and Alamogordo Main Street should be partnering on developing the scope of services, planning out how you want to revitalize your downtown community. And then New Mexico Main Street would provide all the resources, technical assistance, and where possible, financial resources. We're extremely thrilled that the state has had some resources in the last couple of years allowed New Mexico Main Street to allocate $2 million for the infrastructure improvements down on New York Avenue, and first with the design work, and second with the construction that's about ready to start as well. So the three of us in a row, there are, I have 10 colleagues that are revitalization specialists that are at your service, from architects to economic development specialists to promotion marketing individuals. I provide the organizational support as well. Usually, in a community the size of Alamogordo, our leverage is about, anywhere from about 35,000 to 75,000, just in technical assistance, and then the capital outlay resources as well. We do review, the organization has to be responsive to the Main Street America's national accreditation standards. It's six standards. It's about 180 indicators and elements that they have to be responsive to, to be accredited as well. And so I'll make myself available to answer any questions at the end of Nolan's presentation that he might have, but I just want to also thank you for your continued support.
Thank you.
See, you can tell why he gets paid the big bucks. So, all right. So one of the things I wanted to touch on, one of the major differences in our contract this year, and I think ever in the history, is we added this exhibit, exhibit of projects of opportunity. So what does that mean? So, you know, in a lot of discussions with Brian Caesar when he was here and, you know, full-time, my point of contact was, you know, as we go throughout a fiscal year, I'm out there trying to chase down monies to accomplish projects that we want to take on for our downtown. And sometimes, I can go find the monies to get it done, full project, but a lot of the times, I can only get grants, or I can only accomplish with fundraising a partial of what we need for the entire project. So one of the things I discussed with the city manager was, you know, at what point, how can we play, play a better partnership between us and the city to actually accomplish projects? Because I don't know how much of you guys have grant experience, but the fact of the matter is, if I only can partially fund a project with a grant, then I can't use that grant, right? And so if I can't use that grant, at the end of the grant period, I have to give the money back. So we decided to give the city an opportunity to see some of these projects we would like to take on, but given the current level of our contract and just our human resources, we can't guarantee contractually that we will accomplish some of these projects. So in lieu of being in violation of a contract, you know, we added this exhibit. And so the hope is, is that I will go out and try to find the money to accomplish some of these extra, extra projects. And if I can partially find those resources, then I have the opportunity to come back before you guys and ask if you would partner with us for the remainder, so we can actually fully accomplish these projects. So that's the plan moving forward. So I'll just pause. Did that make sense to everyone? Does anybody have questions on that? No? Okay. Oh, too far. All right. So our year in review. To be honest with you all, we had to pivot pretty, pretty hard, pretty early on in the fiscal year, because Main Street, we're calling, we're branding it Main Street Makeover. You've been hearing it, Great Blocks, for a long time now. We had to pivot a little bit, because Great Blocks started coming up faster than we were expecting. So we still held 12 events downtown. You know, we have our big ones that everybody knows about, Christmas on Main Street, Rockabilly, Atomicon. But we had several smaller ones. We brought the farmer's market downtown for Wednesday night markets. It was very successful. They're coming back, actually, starting tomorrow. We did probably the most successful Shop Small Saturday event that we've ever done. Our businesses grossed higher on the Shop Small Saturday event than they did at our Christmas event. So it was highly successful, and it wouldn't have been if we hadn't had the partnerships we did with the city, with the Center of Commerce, and of course, with the Small Business Development Center. So we also got accepted into the Arts and Cultural District Designation Jump Start Program. The Jump Start Program is run by New Mexico Main Street. Ultimately, the designation is given to us from New Mexico Arts, but, so that program is basically, you're building your application to get the state designation. And so we've been holding just about monthly focus groups and meetings with a New Mexico Main Street revitalization specialist over that program to start putting together our projects that will build that application. Obviously, we've been trying to get ready for Great Blocks. And here in a couple of slides, I'll show you some of the things we've already put together. We have an entire branding package we did around it. And then ultimately, we totally did a reorganization for ourselves, and so what does that mean? It means we made new policies, new procedures, and we adopted new economic transformation strategies. Now, I know that's just jargon, but an economic transformation strategy is basically, it is our long-term goal. It's our aim, our thing we're aiming at for five to 10 years down the road. And so those will remain the same, but our projects every year should be pushing us closer and closer to achieving those goals. So we adopted two new ones. Our old one used to be focused on the walkability of the intersection of 10th Street and New York. We call it the Frogger Intersection, right? That was our first economic transformation strategy. And our second economic transformation strategy used to focus on small business development and promotion. We've shifted, so our new one is focused on making our downtown, you know, you hear people talk about, oh, I remember when I was a kid, we'd go downtown, and I'd buy my suit, and we'd go to the record store, and we'd hang out. So our first economic transformation strategy is focused on, how do we make our downtown a place where our locals want to spend time, where they want to enjoy themselves, where they like to loiter and hang out and enjoy our community? Our second transformation strategy is primarily focused on reaching the personnel and the families and the military folks over at Holloman Air Force Base. We've developed some really great relationships with some of the folks over there, and it's, it's deep in our hearts to try to bring them closer into our town. We want Holloman to be a place where people want to get stationed. I'm not going to read all these things. All of you should have received or will receive an impact report from us. It goes into much greater detail on what we did this last year and what we're planning to do in the upcoming year. Some of the stats I wanted to point out, though, is that each of our large-scale events, the three I mentioned, Christmas, Rockabilly, and Atomicon, saw about 5,000 people at each one, so that's great numbers for those events. We saw over a million dollars in private investment into the district. So what does that mean? It means people are wanting to open businesses and fix stuff downtown, and that's huge. We also received $14,000 in grants, and one of the ways that we benefit Alamogordo is that we can go out and try to get money that maybe the city couldn't get otherwise unless we were here. And I'm not allowed to announce it yet, but I can tell you that that number will, is going to increase substantially. I just can't tell you right now. So I'll tell you next month when I can tell you. Okay, year ahead. So with the pivot on our ETSs, we, we've taken on some different projects. We've, obviously, we've got the Main Street Makeover, Holloman, Downtown Events. Here is a little sneak peek into the Main Street Makeover project. So this is a rendering done based on the construction documents. We've got two large-scale pylons that are gonna, we're going to have five of those total. They'll, they'll give little odes to different historical context for our city. And there's our beautiful logo that we got done by a revitalization specialist. So it costs nothing. Normally, a branding package like the sort we got for this project would be about $2,000 for a nonprofit rate. Here is, it's not complete quite yet, but I wanted to give you guys a sneak peek into some of the documents we're putting together. This is an FAQ poster that we'll be disseminating through the city, once our renderings are finalized and we're ready to move forward on that. So I've been in discussions with Sabrina about how can we partner? Because if we do all this work to generate all this content and have this branding package, we want the city to get to share in that as well. And also, it gives everybody a sense of, what's the word I'm looking for? Basically, they see the same thing everywhere they look, right? So they have that logo recognition, they know what we're talking about, even if it's in PSAs through the city. Before we can start trying to pull Holloman Air Force Base persons into our community, we first need to understand who they are, what they're interested in. We need to know their demographics. Now, the base does their own census. So when we pull our just generalized census data, we don't get theirs as well. So you have to go a different route to get that information. We've partnered over there with them. I have some of it already in hand. But we're going to be working with another revitalization specialist, because they don't cost me anything, and they'd cost me a lot if I had to pay for them. So I use them as much as possible. So we'll be working with them to come up with a market analysis. And once, once we get a little deeper into that in this next year, you know, my plan is I would like to talk to the city, is there anything you guys want to understand better? Anything with Stephanie, as she, as she continues to work on bringing that Economic Development Department in-house? How could we partner? Because once we have the data, we have the data, and we want the city to get as much of it as, as we can as well. We're also partnering with the Spouse Group Base to try to bring them downtown quarterly. This is kind of a first time we've ever tried this. We're going to partner them with the small businesses downtown, get them down into our, our beautiful area, and get them used to knowing what kind of shops and stuff we offer there. Our events for the next fiscal year will be a little weird, because some of the street will be torn up for part of it. But given a slight slide in schedule, Christmas will still be going on normally. We plan to do some kind of groundbreaking event or something for the Main Street Makeover. And then I put the Flickinger's event up here, because even though it's not a Main Street event, I want everybody to be aware of it, because it's really cool, and it's on my, it's on our, in our district. So they've got their Heritage Day Festival coming up, and I've heard it's going to be even bigger than last year, so. And the hope is to continue to partner with the city, the Small Business Development Center, and the center on the next Shop Small Saturday, since it was such a success. Challenges are what they always are, vacant buildings, the Avis Building continues to be a concern, right? And then obviously, we're trying to just get as ready for construction as we can.
Are they still using that?
The Shroud Museum?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. They are. And, you know, one of the things we're focusing on as we get ready for construction, during construction, is we will be putting together an entire plan on how to market our businesses through that construction. So it's not just generating the, the content of for-year info stuff for the Main Street Makeover. We're also going to be trying to partner with our businesses, who need to save as much money as they can while the streets close down to promote them as much as humanly possible. So we're putting an entire marketing campaign together for them too, so. That's it for me. Any questions?
Does anybody have any questions?
The 1.9 million in the capital outlay, how much of that comes to you guys here? No, none?
No. So that will be, the way that'll work is, as the city proceeds with the construction project, they will actually send all of that up the state, and the state will reimburse them for the money spent on the contractors.
And when is the completion, expected completion?
I, I don't, I don't know. The last I heard from the engineering manager for start is looking like January of 2024. Now, the grant period does technically end October of 2024. So realistically, we're probably going to have to apply for an extension on that grant.
They'll probably get it. Okay. Nobody has any more questions?
Thank you, everybody. I appreciate you guys.
Okay. Thank you. All right. We're going to move on to public comment. I have Donna left, right? Okay. So I have one person signed up, Robert Sadio. Sir, if you want to come up. Panorama Park closure.
Yes.
And you will have three minutes. And if you'll just state your name for the record, that would be great.
My name is Robert Sadio, and I live in the Panorama Circle area. And I saw some time back that they're planning on closing some parks around town. I put a small comment on Facebook, and it generated numerous comments from people in the area. Over 180 people commented on just the closure of that one small park. It's a very small park, requires very little maintenance. There's not even a trash can there. It's a picnic table and a barbecue grill. And that's all there is to it, a few little trees.
Did you see this on social media? Is that where you saw it?
I posted it on social media.
You posted on social media? Okay.
So, you know, for the city or somebody to come and see who actually goes there, it would take such amount of time. I, I'm retired, I'm at home. I see the children in the neighborhood come and sit and visit and play there. I see mothers bringing their children, reading books to their children there. I see other individuals coming and just sitting and enjoying our park. It's a very small, little circle. I mean, it's a postage stamp compared to most of the parks in town. And the maintenance and upkeep of that park is very minimal. I have gotten a verbal commitment from Gonzales Long that they would take over the maintenance at no cost to the city. They would come maintain that park. It would take nothing to maintain that. As it is now, I see the city come out there two, three times a year. I actually see city employees come take breaks during lunch and enjoying that park as well. This is just trying to save one small area. It's very, it might not be important to the city, it might not be important to a lot of people in this commission or to the people in that community. It's part of the community, it's been there for years. And we're just trying to save that one small park. There's very little to it, but it means a lot to the people in that area. And I just wanted to bring that up. I mean, I posted it on Alamogordo City Watch and the comments, and they asked me to come speak to the commission on this. So I'm here, speaking for the people that made the comments and wanted to see if we could save that one part. I understand some of the other parks, it's due to maintenance, it's due to safety. This one has no playground. This one's just, like I said, it's a picnic table and a barbecue grill.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is it, do we know of any plan to get rid of this park?
So I saw the same, the comment on Facebook, and I called, because I think it was called the Panorama Park. And I looked on our map, I couldn't find it. So I asked Belinda, the Parks and Rec Director, what park it was. She said she thought it was the little islands out there. So her and I actually went in there, went that day to go look, and we had no plans on closing it. I'm not sure where that rumor came from, but Belinda and I actually cleaned it up, because there was bottles and coke things, so her and I cleaned it up. And we asked Eric to put a trash can out there, so that, there is no trash can out there, so that we could, or whoever goes out there to sit can have a trash can to throw it. And it's on the weekly rotation for parks. So I'm not sure where that rumor came from. I went and checked it out. Belinda checked it out.
Can I ask where you heard that?
There was a post.
Okay.
From the city on Facebook.
I, I'm sitting here trying to be calm, but I'm just going to say this. Facebook is not a reputable news source. It is not a great place to get your news from. And I have encouraged everybody, and I will encourage you and anybody else that's listening tonight, or anybody else, the 200 posters that posted on your post. If you have a question, call, ask, because if you read it on Facebook, there might be some truth to it, and there might not be some truth to it. And, and, and so, like I said, I'm trying really hard to remain calm, but, you know, I read things about myself on Facebook, and I'm like, man, I must have slept through that one, because I don't even remember being there. I don't remember doing that. I don't remember saying that. And so I always get frustrated. I personally have a love-hate relationship with social media myself. But I knew when I heard that, that that was likely not true. But I can't say anything, because if I say anything, I get, like, attacked, so. But I would encourage you, in the future, if you see something on Facebook and you have a concern, I'd be happy to give you my card. I'm sure any of our commissioners would. Or Ms. Hernandez, who's very open and available, call and ask. Verify the information, because chances are, if it's on Facebook, it's probably not true.
That's the reason I was here, just to address.
Thank you.
I just wanted to voice my opinion, and the opinion of a few others that wanted me to come.
Right. No, I appreciate that. Well, obviously, that was an unfounded rumor, and so.
I'm glad to hear that. Thank you very much.
Your park is saved.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And you'll get a trash can.
And it has a trash can now. And it has a trash can now. We'll see how many people use it, right? Okay. All righty. Well, thank you. We are going to move on to the city manager's report.
So I actually didn't prepare anything today. I knew it was going to be a long meeting. I don't have anything to update unless there's something specific the commission would like me to discuss.
Okay. How about remarks and inquiries by the city commission?
I do have.
I got one after.
I'm sorry?
Oh, I said I got one after you.
I, I wanted to mention that I had a problem with my telephone, the one that I get calls from the residents. And I just wanted to thank Sabrina and I think it's Rachel from the library.
Rochelle.
Rochelle from the library who helped get information in regards to the cleanup back on the site. And, and hopefully everything is running smoothly. If anybody wants to help with the cleanup as a volunteer or if you have someone that is elderly, disabled, or sick or in the military, there's a form that needs to be filled out in order for us to come onto the property. And right now, you can go directly to my email address and do that form and it will come directly to me so we can have that information. But the cleanup is going to be July 15th. It is going to be from seven to 12. We are getting properties to clean up, but we lack volunteers. So if any of you guys sitting here tonight would like to volunteer, please, please do so. I would appreciate it. We have people from all over the city, so it's not just in District Number Five, which is the district that I represent. And right now, we, we may have someone that can do the shredding. So that's something, that was a, a service that we offered too. But this year it has been cut. But if we get news of that in the next few weeks, we will reinstate that and go forward. Dudley School is still on the list. We still need volunteers for that. All of the contractors were out today to get everything set up so we could have a, I guess, a completion date by the end of August. And then the first and second of September, that is the scheduled day, that the school will have an opening celebration. And so hopefully, you know, everybody can come out. And we do need volunteers for painting and that's going to happen in the next two weeks. So that is something that you can also contact me or anybody else on the commission here if you'd like to participate. And hopefully we can get you signed up and get you a paintbrush. That's all I have.
I've said a couple of questions. With the street maintenance program that's fixing to come before us, hopefully soon, I know you mentioned Ridgecrest Drive and, and the other one out there by the golf course, I can't remember the name, Desert Lakes. The last four or five years, I've been told that Oregon Avenue will be on that. I would like to know where we're at with that, if that's still, we've been telling people in my district for the last five years that Oregon Avenue from basically First Street all the way to Indian Wells was going to be repaired, replaced. So I'd like an update on that whenever.
I know that the budget came in at like $5 million. It was like super expensive to do the whole thing. I don't know if, is Nancy still here?
I don't see her.
Oh.
You guys can get it to me in an email. I just wanted to make sure that it's on that because we've been telling people, actually that street has been on the street maintenance rotation since I was in office before, back in, you know, between '09 and, and '14. That road was on there on the five-year plan. And now it looks like we're going to bump it potentially or maybe do it in phases, which phases is okay. I understand the money's an issue.
Yeah, the $5 million was pre-COVID too, so I'm not sure where we're at right now, but.
Probably higher now, so. But if you guys could get me an update on where Oregon Avenue is in the rotation, because I know for a fact that road hasn't been touched since the mid-'80s.
So I spoke with Nancy. She is going to send an email out sometime during the month of, of the, I guess, the raw data and some of the issues that she has, the consultants working on, so.
I just would like, you know what I mean? When we get closer to it, I feel the commission, it kind of needs to be briefed on what we're going to start, how we're going to look at it, what we're doing. I understand, we've got a plentiful amount of roads that need to be fixed. But, you know, I understand we need to kind of let, you know, Public Works pick and choose which ones that they feel or per the study.
It's not going to be them deciding, it's going to be the two consultants on the utilities and the streets coming together to determine where the needs, the highest priority needs are, so.
All right. I just want to see where Oregon Avenue is in, in the rotation because we've been lying to everybody if we, if we bump it. And then in the past, we used to get a weekly report from staff to the commission. And sometime during COVID, I think that went, I don't know, it may have been earlier than that, but that kind of went by the wayside. I'm not sure how everybody else feels, but I, I would like to bring back a, the city manager's weekly report to the commission, maybe at least until we get the city manager hired, the new one. Just so we're aware of.
I think I've been pretty responsive to all your questions as you come in, whether it's you or.
It's not so much questions. It's just, so it actually would eliminate a lot of questions like the, the park out on Panorama. You know, it would just be what meetings y'all are attending and kind of what are the issues that are, and it's just a brief overview of what everybody's kind of working on. So the commission's aware of what's going on.
So I'll be straight up honest with you. I'm doing two jobs and to sit and to get a lengthy, lengthy report. I am more than happy to address any issues that you have, but I don't have time to sit at my desk. I barely have time to go to the restroom, to be honest, so.
Well, like I say, I don't know how the rest of the commission feels about it, but I would, for one, like to see a report. And it doesn't have to be anything in detail. And it, you know, before what it was is the department heads kind of put it together, gave it to you, what they were working on, and they got it to us once a week, just so we kind of know.
And that kind of goes to my picking and choosing what the directors feel is important as opposed to what commission feels is important. That's why I kind of sent an email asking what would you guys want an update on so I can get you meaningful information on the record.
There's a lot of things that have happened that we may or may not know about, you know? How do we know to ask about it if we don't know about it? So that's, that's where I'm going. You know what I mean? I just noticed the other day, we, you know, we got a brand new fence around the cemetery. I don't remember hearing a word.
That was on the ICIP that you all approved.
Did it? I don't remember seeing it on there, like I say, during COVID and some of those months.
It came actually twice.
Okay.
So.
But just, just little things. Like I say, we're all busy. We all have just as many meetings or, or things going on during the day. We don't live and breathe this like you guys do. So I, I just feel it would, you know, like I say, I don't know how the rest of the commission feels. I may just be being picky, but. And I think it would help alleviate some of the questions and concerns and I think it would have alleviated if we'd have been doing that all along with the previous city manager before he retired, so.
Anybody else? We will move on to the consent agenda. Does anybody have anything they want to pull off the consent agenda?
I'll just make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Mayor Protem made a motion to approve the consent agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner McDonald. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Stephen Burnett.
Aye.
Josh Riden.
Aye.
Sharon McDonald.
Aye.
Dusty Wright.
Aye.
Susan Payne.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. And we had nothing removed. We're going to move on to new business. Item six, consider and act upon Resolution 2023-20 declaring 308 North White Sands Boulevard to be, well, it's a dilapidated structure. I don't need to read all that. And we have Josh Sides, our code enforcement manager, with some information on that.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem, Commissioners, Acting Manager Hernandez. I bring before you a dilapidated structure in our community, 308 North White Sands Boulevard. I put together a short, a short slideshow presentation just to kind of get you updated as to the steps and things that we have taken at code enforcement in looking at this to ask you to consider and act upon this resolution to declare it dilapidated. 308 North White Sands is located, is where the star is. It is located on White Sands Boulevard between Third and Fourth, kind of a catty corner to Basin Electronics. This building has been on the dilapidated structures list for quite some time. I kind of picked up this ball again and went rolling, and went it rolling again. This slide shows the timeline of the things that I've done with it, not what anybody else before me has done, but what I've done with it. So on 420, I was made aware of this building. On 421, I had Paul Bennett, the Facility Maintenance Manager, go out and he did a walk around of the building. He found that the north, the northeast and the southwest corners weren't stable and at risk of potential collapse. On 424, I mailed an International Property Maintenance Code letter to the owner listing six violations of IPMC International Property Maintenance Code and how to correct them as well as contact information for me. On 511, code enforcement received the certified mail receipt back saying that the property owner had signed for that letter and received that letter. On 522, I did apply for and was granted a 12 judicial district court search warrant by Judge Bryant. On 523, I did execute that search warrant on the property. This slide right here kind of lists out, it does list out the International Property Maintenance Code violations just from public right-of-way, so sidewalk, alleyway, just what you can see from the outside. This is done before the search warrant. This is what was on the letter that I sent to the property owner, Mr. Douglas, which is actually here tonight behind me. And this kind of lists out what the violations were and also, like I said, how to correct them in the letter. The condition of the property, when you look around, it has, this is a picture of the southwest corner and you can see the large crack in it from settling issues, foundation issues. These pictures, the one on the left is of that crack. It's up close. You can tell that it is quite large of a crack in that. And you can see more on the right-hand picture of that corner settling as well as the graffiti on the side of the building. Again, another picture of that corner in question, which was deemed by Paul Bennett as unstable and at risk of collapse. On the right-hand picture is a picture of the back end or the east end of that building. The far right-hand corner is going to be the other corner in question, the northeast corner of this building, which has severe damage to it, severe cracking, bricks missing as well as some graffiti on it. And this is, as you can see, that this, this crack is substantial. It's a substantial crack in that building. This is the northwest corner of the, of the building, which has this crack in it. It's not as substantial, but it does have a crack in it. These are pictures from execution of the search warrant. When I go in and do an execution of a search warrant, I do photograph everything I see from front door all the way through tracing my steps so that way it's documented as to what I'm seeing at the time. So this is, on the left-hand picture, my back is to the front door. This is a room on the left-hand side. You can see sheet rock falling from this, from the ceiling and rafters being exposed. There is actually a, on the top left-hand corner of that left-hand picture, that is actually a hole which is clear through the ceiling, through the roof, allowing rain, water to come into this building right now. And you can see more of that sheet rock falling on the right-hand picture. And you can see that hole in the right-hand picture. You can't see the daylight coming through it just because of daylight coming through the window there, but it is, that is that giant hole. Again, more pictures of just the condition on the left-hand side as it was seen, as I saw it on the right-hand side. That is an interior picture of the northeast corner of the building. You can see how displaced it is, displaced about three inches or so. And it is definitely a, a concern. Again, more cracks in this building. On the left-hand side is, is the crack, is one of several cracks in this building. On the right-hand side, that is the north, I'm sorry, the southwest corner of this property where you can see that it, there's, there's settling issues and surprise some water damage in there as well. This picture is from the front door, it's to the right, to the south. So another, again, just more conditions of the property with sheet rock missing from, from the ceiling and things like that. But that is the condition of this property in the which I found it and asked for you to consider and act upon declaring this building so dilapidated that it needs to be condemned so nobody else can get inside that building. Now, the property owner I did talk with and he wishes to rehabilitate this building. We've had, we had a lengthy discussion on this property and I just want to make that known that we have had discussions on this property, does wish to rehabilitate it. By going through this process, I did explain to him that he would have, should you pass this resolution today, he, and, and once it's signed and he gets a copy of that, he would have 10 days to start doing something with this building, which he's already started with this building. He's, he's already made me aware, I've met him there before. So after that, he has a year to complete. It doesn't mean that if he has made substantial progress in this building, doesn't mean we're just going to go through and tear it down. So by that, I did want to assure him that I would make that well-known of timelines and things like that on this building. Other than that, I will stand for any questions if you, if you have them.
I, I have some questions. I will just, this is one building that I was really happy to see on the agenda tonight. This, it's awful. It's awful. With all due respect, sir, this is awful. And it's been awful for a very long time and I, I find it a little curious that we've executed a administrative search warrant and now you're ready to rehabilitate it? Yeah. How long is it?
Make a comment on that.
Okay, hold on a second. And so.
Before you go too far on it, there's some other issues.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm a little concerned about that. I would, I, I'm looking at the cracks in here and I'm trying to figure out how that's going to happen and what that's going to look like. Commissioner Reardon.
Previous owner, I think, just passed away not too long ago, correct?
Actually, he is in.
Can he come up to the mic so we can pick him up for the record?
Thank you for letting me address.
Yes, sir.
This is Ms. Payne, Wright, Mr. Reardon and the other commissioners. Yes, my, this was my father's building. Sorry. This is my father's building. He used it to do his antique cars. And yes, he neglected it tremendously. And I am not going to do that. I, it is a, I mean, it's ugly as all get out right now, okay? But it's coming back. And we need space for businesses in Almagordo. And there's a gentleman that's buying up the entire block. And he is from out of state and any proceeds he gets from that is going to leave New Mexico, Almagordo. And I want to keep the money here. And I work very diligently. I've done a great deal of work on the building. The first thing I have to do is shore the roof to prevent more damage, okay? And I've done that. I got the, I got the front of it stripped. I've replaced, there's no longer, well, there are holes right now because I have not placed some of the wood. But I've ordered the material to re-roof the front of the structure. And I'm going to use a membrane roof that's going to last 30 years. And I have memories of my dad and working with him in the building. And it's, excuse me, it's emotional to me. He was taken to the hospital this morning from his facility, that aristocrat. And we don't know what's going to happen. He may not leave. And this was, this building was kind of dumped on me because one of my brothers is supposed to take care of that stuff. And he got tired of it and they said, here. And I'm a teacher, I teach in Deming, okay? So I had two days every week to come to Almagordo, visit my elderly dad, my mom, and work on the building. And as soon as I got your letter, I started working on it, okay? I've made progress and I've, and I've got, I have a plan on how to get it done. I don't want my building condemned. It will be taken care of. And I, I would like some faith from the mayor and the city commission on my ability to get it done. And I will give you a timeline. I'll give you whatever you need, telling you what. I'll give you whatever you need, telling you what I'm doing. But I am not going back to, I'm a teacher, and I'm not going back to teaching until this is resolved. And I, and when the guy was talking about STEM, okay? That's my career. I teach science, eighth grade science. And I just want some time to allow me to get this done, and either get a tenant in it, or get it up to shape where I can get some actual value out of it. And now, and my building has been damaged by the dilapidated, burned-out structure next door. They had a diseased tree.
I think that one's on here, too, isn't it?
Yeah, it actually fell on that corner of that building. Now, it was previously damaged, but that increased the damage on that back corner. And I went to talk to the owner, and I don't think she has any way to compensate or pay for any of the damage. The tree fell, took out the electrical, okay? That's 3,000 bucks, to be able to reattach the meter and all that stuff to it. That's fine. I'm willing to spend that money. And, but that also slows down the rehab a little bit, because I have no power. And I have borrowed a generator, and the electrical tools I've been using, I've been running off of a generator. I'm also getting ready to paint it. I've purchased the paint, and we're going to clean up that side. And what I'd like from the city commission would be, I would like to put a mural, once it is complete and it's nice, to greet people as they come through Almagordo, and maybe they'll stop, okay? And spend some of their money here. Not in my, I don't have a business. So, but, you know, there's lots of dispensaries and other things in that neighborhood. Well, I agree, okay? Because it does, I've, it is not in a good part of town.
Well, it's not a horrible part of town.
It is, ma'am. I've witnessed drug deals.
I know.
Okay? I was accosted in front of the building when we had the rainstorm. I went down there, okay? And as I come out of the building with my flashlight, there's a gentleman closing the door to my car. And it is an issue, and we need to also, I'm sorry, I'm going to go on to something other than my building, I apologize, but we need to address these drug issues. And the, kind of, the enforcement of it. And if any of you guys...
And I, I get that, but we...
...have any information on the drug deal? I'd be more than happy to share it to you.
Sir, I get it. I do, I understand. I'm sorry, and I don't mean to cut you off, but...
Yeah, it's okay.
Can I just ask, have you seen progress on the building?
There's been some progress. As far as it being safe, no. It's not safe. And by passing this resolution and condemning it, condemn placards would go up, only allowing city staff, contractor, or property owner to go in to do maintenance only. So, that way, if this building were to collapse, the casualty rate, which I assume would be casualty rate, would be very minimal.
Okay. And so, hold on just a second, I'm sorry. Can I just ask, Ashley, what, and I think we've done this with another property, too, a while back, and they did follow through.
Last year. We can give them six months, you know? It's not like the building's open to the public.
Well...
You know what I mean? And if they're in there illegally...
That's kind of questionable, actually.
If they're in there illegally, and the building collapses and kills them, that's on them, you know?
Is that...
Especially if you put up no trespassing signs and...
Is that... Okay. If I could just ask the attorney what she thinks?
It's fine.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Sorry, Madam Mayor, what is the question? I guess we never did, was able to get at the question.
Oh, sorry. I thought I asked. So, if we, how could we pass this and then give him time? Or tell us what we can do?
So, we can give him a timeframe.
Okay.
I know, we've done it in the past, from my knowledge. And so, we can give him a timeframe, like, you know, we want this done by, you know, however long. So, you guys can pass this and do like a timeframe.
Okay. So, getting back to Commissioner Reardon's comment, if someone were to, I don't know, take up residence in there, or, you know, seek shelter in there, and the building did collapse, or someone was hurt, is there any liability on the city? Like, if we put no trespassing signs in that kind of, is there any liability? Because I always think there's probably going to be some.
There'd be liability on that gentleman, but not us.
It would be on the property owner, because it's not city property.
So, no liability on us, even if we give him an extension?
Correct.
Right?
Yes.
We're not putting the city at risk?
No.
Okay. That's all I needed to know.
That was the one we did previously, and I thought it was on Miami, but Sharon said it was on Third Street.
But it wasn't on Third, it wasn't extended. She got it done in the timeframe.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And that lady, you know, like I say, it's a classic example. Usually, the property owner doesn't come and talk to us. In that lady's case, she came and talked to us, we gave her an extension, she did what she said she'd do.
Right.
And we didn't have to spend taxpayers' money removing the structure.
I remember it very well.
This gentleman came to us, he's asking for an extension. You know, I mean, the building's been standing for probably a better part of 100 years. I don't see it coming down anytime soon, you know? And there, again, if they break in illegally, and they're in there, and they get hurt, that's kind of on them. I know, granted, they could probably sue him, but they shouldn't be in there.
I understand that. I just want to make sure, because it came before us tonight, and now we are aware of it, I want to be sure that if someone gets hurt in there, that we're not liable, because now we've all been made aware of it. So, as long as we're not, I'm fine with it.
Is the building secure?
Yeah.
For the most part?
Yes.
For normal, law-abiding citizens?
Yeah, by a law-abiding citizen. Now, we had, when they inspected it, we, they put the city lock on it. The day that we took the city lock off of, and there was all kinds of paperwork in the window, taped to the window. It basically invited people in. They took a survey stake from where they were put in that parking lot. And go look at the parking lot, it's pretty awesome.
They did that this weekend.
And punched a hole in the back door, wooden door. It's, that's probably 100 years old, too. And entered the structure. And I didn't find out about it until Monday. The gentleman that's buying up the block called me on Monday and said, "He was there Saturday, and my building was full of transients," okay? I would have loved to have known that on Saturday, okay? And I was able to recover quite a bit of the stuff that was taken out. It was put into the yard of 310, okay? And again, and that tree came down again. It's diseased, and I had to cut my way before I could get in my building. And then, I've talked to Mrs. Fisk about it, and she says there's 15 people that have interest in that lock. And I would, I mean, if there's any way possible, I will purchase the block, because that thing is so ugly, I will never be able to get any revenue off that building, if I can rent it, until that is taken care of. And if it takes me having to buy the property to tear down the structure, so be it. But the, there is this much room between the buildings, and that guy put his roofing and attached it to my building, which has caused even more erosion, which is affecting the thing. And I cannot fix that side of that building until that structure is removed.
That's another question I have. On, the next item is the building right next door. If we were to go in and declare that one, and we remove that, are we going to compromise the structure of his building by removing that other building?
No.
It's not, because I can't tell in this picture.
But it's going, but it, there's no way you can do anything in four inches of space between the buildings.
The roofs are connected, though, aren't they?
He, I've been roofing on it this last week, and some of the, his roofing material was actually attached...
To your building.
To my building. Unbeknownst. And, but that thing is, hasn't had a roof on it, and...
So, where these cracks are with the cinder block and all that, you're going to be able to fix all that?
I have, yes, I have a firm plan on repairing it.
Okay. All right. Does anybody else have any questions? Okay, do I have a motion? Well, I don't know if I should say it like that.
Honestly, I feel we should table this item for six months, give him time. And in the event that you don't get that done in six months, or have substantial amount of repair done, then we continue with what we were going to do.
The only way I would support that is if we had a firm date, and very specific items that, as in, the building needs to be safe, so that it, we know it's not going to collapse.
How about the end of the year? That would give me six months.
That's roughly six months, but I don't know if we can, can we stipulate his schedule? And I don't think we can really do that. If we just say, hey, we give him X amount of time, and if we don't see substantial amount of improvement, then, because it's not our property, we really can't dictate that.
What can we, hey, I'm sorry, sir, hang on just a second.
It's more of a legal question. We just, you know, I'm just for, if the property owner's here, willing to do something with it, I would rather give them the opportunity, rather than us have to spend taxpayers' money.
And I don't have a problem with that, but I do want, like, a specific date, and I want to know what we can do.
I can be in contact with Josh on a regular basis and give him updates on what is done. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to use Mr. Sides.
No, that's okay.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. And what can we do?
I think, Ashley...
To give it teeth, if that's what you prefer, you pass the resolution with a six-month extension.
So, pass it with a six-month extension?
It automatically goes in six months.
That's what we did for Third Street.
For which one?
For the Third Street one.
I thought we tabled it and...
No, because if she hadn't made any, or I think, I want to say it was she, but I don't know, if the property owner hadn't made any progress, it was already deemed unsafe and a hazard, so after that specific time period, the city could go in.
I think that was the one where she cleared it, right? Her son came from Las Cruces to help her clear it. Yeah. Okay. So... No, we didn't table it.
I don't think we passed the resolution.
No, we had a very specific date for the extension.
I think we gave her 30 days, or 60 days, or 90 days, or something like that. To show progress. To start, anyway. I don't remember passing the resolution first, so.
Okay. So, if we pass a resolution with an extension, is that how we would do that? Yes? Okay.
A resolution as amended with a date or six-month extension?
And what would we be saying in that timeframe? What?
I guess that would be a commission decision on, are you, what specific progress are you looking for? The other one was pretty straightforward. The building was going to come down.
Was going to come down, yeah.
So, that one was very specific.
This one's a little trickier, and what we're saying is that it's so ruined, damaged, or dilapidated, that it's a menace to basically public safety. And so...
Yes, yes. What is your plan on the structability of the building?
What I'm, oh, my plan is to, I'm going to rebuild that corner. We're going to cut the foundation, and then repour that corner, and then put the new cinder blocks up. Now, the roof is going on. Material, I decided to go with a membrane roof. So, it's got to be shipped from back east. It should be here within a week. Then the roof will be done, and then I can start. I want to go ahead and, it is so ugly, that I want to go ahead and paint it prior to doing that corner. But I, I'm devoted to this. I'm going to get this done.
Okay.
And I do not, I would appreciate it if we could put it back six months, because I'm concerned that if it's condemned, when it is time to sell it, or I know I can't get a tenant in it while it's condemned, and then I don't know the process of how to get it uncondemned. But I just, all I want is a chance.
Okay, okay. No, I understand.
I think...
So, six months, six months from today's date is actually December 13th. Could we, could we say, like, December 15th or something?
Could you, could you do the 10th instead? Because I have a trip I'm going on by the 10th. And so, if you, if there's something you're...
Well, as long as you're, as long as we see progress by the 15th.
It'll be done in two months.
Okay. So, could we do something like that?
We could, I mean, we could table it, we could either, or, you know, we can pass this, and one of my thoughts was, we could have Josh do a presentation in three months, just to give commission an update...
An update.
As to, you know, improvements that he has seen.
Okay.
That, you know, that might be an option, too, to keep the commission aware of what's been going on in this. Those are just something that...
So, we can, we can pass the resolution, we could give him six months with an update in three months on the progress? Could we do something like that?
Yes.
Okay.
If we pass the resolution tonight, go ahead and declaring it dilapidated, and then he gets it back into serviceable or usable condition, do we have to go back in and rescind our resolution? You know what I mean? It's, I think it would be, it would be cleaner if we just tabled it, and staff kept an eye on it, and we gave him the six months. And in three months, if Mr. Sides comes back and says, hey, look, he's made no, absolutely no progress, then we call the gentleman up and say, hey, we're putting this back on the agenda, you haven't kept your end of the bargain, and we're going to go ahead and declare it. Because, like he said, if he gets it back into usable shape, and we've already declared it dilapidated and ruined, then...
We could do another resolution, or to undeclare it, or we can table it. I mean, it's just kind of how you, doing a resolution gives you teeth now to make sure it gets done, or if you table it and bring it back. Commission choice.
What's everybody's thoughts?
I would say bring back the resolution in 90 days. If he hasn't done anything in 90 days, then...
Or at least...
Some progress to it, then...
I agree with that. If we don't have substantial, or at least some showing that he's making an effort in 90 days, then we bring this resolution back. We'll table it for tonight, and in 90 days, if he hasn't, or if he has, then we give him the six months for, you know, or if he needs additional time, then we give him that.
Yeah, I think...
This building has looked this way for 40 years, and I know this gentleman hasn't been the one in control of it. It was his father.
That's the problem.
Yeah.
That's the whole problem. You just said it right there.
But we've got multiple, actually, we've got probably more buildings like this on White Sands than we do usable buildings.
I understand that, but we need to clean those up.
We do, we do.
Because when you start looking at the south side, and you start looking at the, even, as much as I don't like Taco Bell, the Taco Bell, and the Starbucks, and the Dunkin' Donuts, and all these new buildings, and then you start driving north, I'm going, you know, I mean, you said yourself...
It is the oldest part of town, though.
It is.
Well, yeah, but it, I get that it's the oldest part of town, but, you know, we're doing a lot on Main Street. You heard that earlier, and...
Can I get, how far does Main Street go? Because I'm within five blocks of it. Can I get assistance on...
I don't know.
The boundaries don't go that far.
Yeah, the boundaries don't go that far, but...
You fenced, the city has fenced the Fisk property to keep people out of that house.
So, I think, so that we can keep this going, that we agree to table this and bring it back in 30 days.
Yeah, I think, I think we need to move on.
Okay.
But, okay, so, we need a motion to table this...
For 90 days?
For 90 days. But then, in 90 days, if he's made progress, we still need to continue monitoring that.
Yes, we'll table it until December again.
Okay.
And if he hasn't made substantial progress, then we'll just...
We'll bring it back. Okay. So, does anybody want to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I have a question. What in the commission's eyes is substantial progress? What violations do need to be clear to be substantial progress?
I don't know that we can stipulate.
No, I know, but for...
We don't have the actual violation. I mean, if we do, then...
I think...
There's a breakdown.
I think Josh. I think it needs to be safe within ninety days.
So you have the current breakdown of what's wrong with it, right? So I guess it's, how much of that, that he has taken care of?
There's a building about four doors down from you that had a very, very similar situation, and they went in with some steel plates,
What do you suggest?
and some all-threaded, and secured the corner.
I would like to make it attractive, and my plan is to get a ziggasable made out of metal, and attach it to that corner, or make sure that nothing falls off of it.
Okay, so, so, maybe we can't. I think we can. I think we can. I think I would like to see it at least.
It's got to be safe.
Be safe, yeah. I think that you, it needs to, you need to demonstrate that you're, because what you're doing right now with that building is we're putting the public at risk.
Yes.
And even homeless people, even transients, even drug people are still part of our population. And their lives matter regardless of whether, you know, regardless of what they're doing. And so we need to make sure that nobody is at risk. And so I would say, in ninety days, can we demonstrate that we have made progress, so that the building is safe, so we feel comfortable knowing that people aren't going to get hurt?
Is the city willing to provide the fence to fix that corner, like you've done Fisk's house? For I don't have to put up the fence? I've made arrangements to, but it's another expenditure.
Yeah, that.
I have to go talk to this Fisk and make sure it's okay for me to put the fence under property?
Okay. Yeah, I don't know about that, but you can probably talk to the city. Are we good over here?
We're just a little concerned, because if we do this, then he doesn't show significant, according to commission, significant progress, then it would be difficult for us to get another warrant to go through that process, if he doesn't make progress.
Do we have to get another warrant to go through this process?
In order to access into the building or on the property, we would have to.
We would have to.
We've already got photos of everything.
But to show that he has made improvements, and.
The gentleman's here, he'll let us in.
I'll provide.
Okay.
You know what I mean? He's, he's here, so.
Okay.
I am sure he would allow us in to show us what he's done.
And I'd be more than happy to do a PowerPoint presentation in ninety days, and show you what I've done. That's well within my.
We still got a motion on the floor?
Yes.
Well, it's not six months now, it's three months.
Ninety days.
Thirty, ninety days is show progress.
I'll second his motion. Or did you ever actually make the motion?
I started to, but.
Okay.
But are we going to go ahead and indicate what things need to be done, at all?
We can't stipulate exactly what has to be done, we just have, we can say that it's got to be made safe and secure from.
Okay, and I need a date.
Ninety days.
Ninety days.
What's ninety days?
September, whatever the meeting is in September.
September thirteenth.
September thirteenth. And.
Do we have a commission meeting then?
Twelfth, on the twelfth.
Twelfth.
Be the twelfth?
No, I can present on the twelfth.
Okay, so how about by September twelfth, commission meeting?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
So then I'll proceed with a motion to table this matter until September twelfth, expecting a presentation of progress made on the rehab of the building.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you.
Okay. And, that's not a roll call, right?
We don't need a roll call to table, I don't think.
No. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, I'm counting on you.
You can depend on me.
Okay.
I will not let you down.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, we're going to move on to item seven. Consider and act upon Resolution 2023-21. This is pertaining to 310 North White Sands regarding a dilapidated structure, and, you're up again.
So this building is actually.
I don't know how I say that, Code Enforcement Manager Seids? That sounds weird, but whatever. Go ahead.
This building is actually right next door to 308, between Third and Fourth Street, Catty Corner to Basin Electronics. This structure has caught fire a few years ago. Here again is a timeline, on the twentieth of April, I was made aware of this building. On the twenty-first, I did have Paul Bennett walk through that, walk around the building, and what he found was the building to be a fire hazard and nuisance, where someone could easily, be easily injured, or worse, if they were to enter the property. He also stated that the shed was leaning and about to collapse, making it extremely dangerous. On four twenty-six, I did mail certified and international property maintenance code letter to the property owner, Mr. George Fritz. Mr. Fritz has passed, relative of his, is, did sign for the letter, and I did meet with her. They are in the process of probate, which I can get into here just a few, once I get through this. Again, that international property maintenance code letter listed out the violations, as well as how to correct them, and how to contact me regarding this letter. That gave them thirty days to correct those. If I wasn't contacted, then of course, we were on to the next step. On May second, I received the certified mail back, which was signed showing that it was received. On the twenty-second, I applied for and was granted an administrative search warrant by the Charles Judicial District Court, Judge Bryant, and the search warrant was executed on the twenty-third of May. The international property maintenance code violations on this were quite lengthy. There are several here. It's two pages long, as far as what, the first page is exterior, second page is interior. Quite lengthy on this one, of course, because it was caught on fire. These are pictures of the structure as it is. These pictures were taken prior to the search warrant, just showing the building. This is the front door of the residence, and the windows beside it. Definitely heavy fire damage, smoke damage. Signs of dilapidation with cracks in the walls, as well as the shed. It is the wooden shed, not the white shed, but the wooden shed that is leaning quite, quite profusely. So this building is surrounded by city of Alamo Gordo temporary fencing, so that we can try to keep people out of it as much as we can. As you can see, still heavy smoke damage. The, once we get into these pictures, this is the interior of the, of the residence. Heavy, heavy fire damage. Fire damage, smoke damage throughout the entirety of this, of this property, to include large hole in the floor, leading you to the subfloor, and holes in the, in the roof, letting in rainwater, and elements, and bugs, and mice, and all of those infestation. More pictures of the interior with, again, more heavy smoke damage throughout the entire property, throughout the entire structure here. So this is another building that I bring before you to declare so heavily ruined and dilapidated that it would, should be abated.
And I'm going to guess we don't have the property owner here?
No.
And have you, you said it was in probate?
Yes. So the property owner, I did meet with the property owner's relative, who said it was in probate, and they would like to actually demolish the building. So I told him it was already in this process. Again, this process is kind of similar to the last building. They want to, they want to demolish it. But this process would give them a timeline to do it.
Okay.
Got a question for the city attorney. We can go ahead and pass this, but can we legally tear that down, since it's in probate? I don't think we can. Because they're trying to decide who's the ownership of it right now, when it's in probate. If we go in and demolish it, are we liable for damaging what's left of their structure? I mean, I agree with you guys, this one needs to come down. This is the second time this house has burnt. It burnt once before, and they repaired it, and there was a gentleman that lived in it, and then it burnt this time. I think he's passed away since then.
Yes.
That's where it's going to give us the dilemma there, is it's in probate. I've seen that drag out for ten years.
That's what I'm questioning, too. That's why I mentioned it, because I feel like we've been down this road with one before.
To be honest, I'm not a hundred percent sure. I would have to do a little bit more research to see how quickly we would be able to do that.
Can we pass it though?
Most of the big thing, yeah, we can pass it, just depending on how quickly can we demolish it? That's going to be a question. It also depends on how many people are in the probate. Like, you know, how many parties?
Fifteen.
So it's going to drag that out a little bit longer. But a lot of times, and I, like, I want to do a little bit of research to confirm, but as long as we notify all the parties.
Then we may be able to proceed.
They would be, they would be on notice. You know, that would be one of the things, I think, would be a question, is, were all of them notified?
So we could reach out to the probate judge, and ask her as well.
I can, yeah, I can talk, or send an email out to.
Letonya Boyce, I think it is? Okay. I don't have a problem with declaring this one, because it needs to come down, but I just, I think that's going to throw a wrench in the plans, especially if there's fifteen family members fighting over it.
Okay. So do I have a motion to approve item seven?
Someone.
I have a motion from Commissioner Burnett. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second from Commissioner Riden. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Stephen Burnett?
Aye.
Josh Riden?
Aye.
Sharon McDonald?
Aye.
Dusty Wright?
Aye.
Susan Payne?
Aye. Motion passes five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to item eight. Consider and act upon Resolution 2023-23, giving notice to the Otero County Clerk of a ballot question to be submitted to the qualified voters during the next regular local election to propose amendments to the city charter. Rachel Hughes, our city clerk, has some information on that?
Yes, Madam Mayor, commissioners. So this is the resolution just giving notice to the Otero County Clerk of a ballot question to be submitted to the voters at the next regular local election, which is in November. These recommendations were brought to you by the Charter Committee. The question will consist of the candidate with the most votes running for mayor to be elected, thereby removing runoff elections for the mayor that we currently have on the charter, and adding the language "their final" to the Charter Committee submitting their recommendations to the commission. Right now, it's not clear, it just says, written recommendations, they're wanting to add "final." And those are the only two that are going to be coming before the voters. However, it's just going to be one question.
Okay.
And I stand for questions.
Does anybody have any questions?
Let's make a motion to approve Resolution 2023-23.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Riden. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Burnett? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Stephen Burnett?
Aye.
Josh Riden?
Aye.
Sharon McDonald?
Aye.
Dusty Wright?
Aye.
Susan Payne?
Aye. Motion passes five zero. We're going to move on to item nine. Consider and act upon first publication of Ordinance 1678 to amend sections of the city charter to mirror state statutes and the New Mexico election code. Rachel.
Yes, Madam Mayor, commissioners, this is an ordinance with the recommendations, the rest of the recommendations, a charter committee brought to you back in May. In Article eight, we are just adding the language of November elections, which the commission opted in to do regular local elections in November, back in 2018. The amendments to Article ten are just to mirror state statutes and the New Mexico election code. And there are also a few grammatical errors in the city charter that we want to correct.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
I have just a quick question, and it's for the attorney, I'm going to put you on the hot seat again, sorry. Did we make sure that we're allowed to do this by ordinance? I know the Local Election Acts allowed us to make changes when we initially adopted it. I just want to make sure we're not needing to put these on the ballot for changes? Are we okay doing it by ordinance? Does it still give us the authority?
So I did look into that, and we are good to go with just the ordinance. It still gives us the, the acts still give us the authority to be able to do that. Because we're just basically making so that all the languages are the same, versus contradicting language, like, if you go to the charter, the charter says one thing, or, you know.
State law says another.
Yeah. We're just trying to make it uniform, that way, if someone looks at the charter, it's a hundred percent accurate, they don't have to then go and look elsewhere.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure we're legal for.
And I'm going to ask a question, I probably should have asked it with the last item, but there was some question about term limits, and I know you sent us some information on that. Did you send that to the municipal league?
I did. I actually reached out, I sent two different emails, and I called, and they never responded to me.
Surprise.
But we did reach out to other municipalities, and we got a lot of responses from them. And additionally, I read several times the state stat, or, no, the state statute, case law, more specifically, Cotrella versus Santianas, which I did send to you guys. And it says that, basically, home rule municipalities cannot do term limits.
Well, I think that's by, it's, and it has something to do with an omission in the state.
Basically.
Constitution, right? It's more of an omission than, is that what they based it on?
Well, the statute actually based it, or the case, I should say, based it a lot on the home rule, the act. And they said that the act did not give our home rule municipalities authority
Yeah.
to do the term limits.
I really didn't think that could be challenged.
I mean, it is a 1995 case. I do find it, you know, I, I looked into this quite in-depth, because I did find it interesting, because a lot of other government, governments can do term limits, but as it stands, the case law, as it is right now, unless it got over, unless this issue would go before the Supreme Court again, this is what the courts are going to rule with, until it's overturned.
So, okay. Can we stay on the municipal league about that? Because I actually, I would challenge that. I would, I would be in favor of really pushing that, because I, I'm, you know, obviously, most of the time with the home rule, it would be the opposite, right? It would be, we're allowed to do something that other municipalities that are not home ruled are not, and in this case, I find it, it's an interesting ruling. But I think it's, and I am not a lawyer, and I've said that a million times, I don't profess to be one, but, man, I'm, that's really disappointing, because I am so in favor of term limits, that I thought it was actually a really good idea.
And I can continue to reach out to the municipal league, as I put down in my email to you guys. I think that, you know, the municipal league would be the appropriate ones to push back on this, and to start advocating for, in legislature, for legislative change. Because if legislature changes, then this case, you know, would kind of no longer be good case law, because if the law changes.
Right.
So that is definitely something we can continue to try to reach out to municipal league, and all other community, or other municipalities, to see if we can't get more of a consensus, and maybe have all of us push back on it.
Yeah.
But that's something, the only way to get this overturned would be to kind of go that route.
Right. Right.
Is to, you know, have legislature try to change it.
Yeah. Well, good, I hope that we.
They're not going to.
I'm going to be following that, because I, well, I think, you know.
It's weird, because it governs your governor, secretary of state, and all those offices, and it governs your Otero County offices, but it has nothing to do with the state legislature or us. It's really weird, you know, because our state reps and senators don't have term limits either. So, but our higher-up elected officials and our county officials do.
Yeah. Welcome to New Mexico. Anyway, well, hopefully, we'll see some progress with that, because, I mean, I guess in the meantime, we could certainly police ourselves with that, but.
Elections are term limits, in a way, so.
Yeah, I suppose.
As long as you get people out to vote, so.
If there's not a lot of voter apathy, which unfortunately, we have. Okay. So, I don't remember, did we vote on this?
No, we haven't. I'll make a motion to approve Ordinance 1678 for first publication.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Riden. Do I have a second?
A second.
A second from Mayor Pro Tem Wright. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Josh Riden?
Aye.
Stephen Burnett?
Aye.
Sharon McDonald?
Aye.
Dusty Wright?
Aye.
Susan Payne?
Aye. Motion passes five zero. We're going to move on to item ten, and now the moment you've all been waiting for. Go ahead, laugh. It's okay. Anyway, item ten is consider an act upon first publication of ordinance sixteen seventy-nine adopting a municipal grocery receipts tax, and Acting City Manager Stephanie Hernandez and Chief Richard Denton have some information for us on that?
Yes. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Commission. We come before you with ordinance sixteen seventy-nine requesting an increase to the city's GRT by one point two five or an eighth of a percentage. Everyone is well aware of the issues that APD has continued to face with retention and recruitment. And before I hand it over to Chief, I just want to make a couple of statements. I'm not bringing this forward lightheartedly. I believe in fiscal responsibility. I think it's the core value, and that every dollar spent should be purposeful, and that it should be for the betterment of the city. Additionally, I don't think that tax revenue should be implemented. I think that tax revenue should be implemented to provide essential and quality life services for all of our citizens. I did struggle with raising the tax, but I do feel that we did our due diligence in bringing, in looking at everything, policies, incentives, and I think we're at the time. I think it's a good time, not only for our officers, but for our citizens. The state has reduced their tax by one point one two five, and we are requesting an increase of the same. So, in essence, it's sort of a wash, and it's not an additional hardship on our community. And I also know that there's a lot of concern that the city is getting into a bidding war with other law enforcement agencies. I myself have had that concern. I had to step back and take a look at the whole picture, the bigger picture, and of course, my whole financial economic background kind of kicked in, and it's almost like a basic supply and demand. You know, there's a limited supply of officers, but all of us are needing the demand. We're, we need the officers. So, in that essence, it's just basic economics. But the other part of it is if you look at the men and women in front of you, they're tired. They're facing burnout. When Chief leaves, we're at thirty-seven officers. We are twenty officers down right now. With the exception of maybe a handful, these are the people who are in charge of patrolling a hundred ninety-one miles of city streets and over thirty thousand citizens. So, we need to do something to help that out. We need to get that number back up. So, like I said, we're twenty officers short right now. Chief Evelyn, Kim Torres, HR Director, Ashley and I, we have been going over this over and over. It's been a conversation for the past eighteen to twenty-four months, and I think we're at a point where I personally felt needed and comfortable bringing this to Commission. So, with that, we're all here to answer any questions or concerns. Chief Denton is going to do a presentation for you, and there's officers here if you want to speak with any of them, so.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. You all know me. So, and I do this every time. Just a few short, this will be a pretty short presentation based on just a few stats. Just, this is our calls for service for twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three. These are just calls that we've responded to. This doesn't include traffic stops, other little things. We go on, this is actually calls for service. You can see we're slightly up, about two, over two thousand calls from twenty-one to twenty-two. Twenty-three, we are on track to meet twenty-two. These numbers are basically good until the end of April is where they go through. They don't go through right now. These were all pulled back around April thirtieth or something. These are arrests that we've made. You can see that our arrests are up from twenty-one and twenty-two and then, and twenty-three. We're really on track to meet that, twenty-two with all arrests. The, the, one thing that we're, we're doing is we are out there more, obviously. Our felony arrests are slightly down, which is, which is a good thing. That just shows us out there more. Some of that has to do with, I personally feel having some guys out there doing more traffic stops is helping a little bit. And if you guys remember, I'd done a presentation about a few people retiring, possibility of retiring, and I was able to retain a couple of them by moving them into, just to, these older guys, just moving them to a traffic unit, basically, just working Monday through Friday out there, pulling cars over, taking the crashes. You'll see on this stat, where the crashes in twenty-one, twenty-two, they, they have dropped. Our traffic stops have gone up. Twenty-three, we're on our traffic stops. We're ahead right now to, to blow twenty-two out of the water, and hopefully, our traffic crashes will also decrease. This is our staffing level since two thousand nineteen. Math is pretty easy. We lost thirteen officers. This is just the wave by quarter at the end of each quarter for the, for those years. So, the end of first quarter of two thousand nineteen, we've had fifty-one officers, and it just goes so forth. So, every year, we just seem to be dropping. I mean, we gain here and there, but we drop a few. Of course, we have been higher than some of these numbers at times, but these numbers are specific to end of quarter. It's, it's, you know, we brought in, I believe, six people that we swore in in front of you. We send them to the academy, and we end up graduating three. So, it looks good, but then things like that happen. And I went over this. We hired forty-three. We've lost fifty-six, either terminated or they've resigned, just consistently dropping them. This is an interesting thing. I highlighted us in Clovis just because our populations are similar, our towns are similar, and military towns, we, our pays are similar, and we're both struggling. And I didn't put all the, all the cities that I got feedback from on here just to keep from boring you, but if you'll notice Albuquerque, there's a reason they're short. Most people seem to be in the eighty, ninety percent staffing wise. We're, we're the lowest that I've found in the state sitting at sixty-five percent. And if you look at our, our pay, where we max out at thirty-two seventy-four, it takes us twenty-five years to get to that mark, and we're starting at twenty-one twelve certified. Clovis is the only one that's close to us there, other than Ridoso, but if you look at Ridoso, they max out at ten years at thirty-nine oh nine. And we're maxed out at thirty-two seventy-four, twenty-five years. One of the concerns here is Otero County Sheriff's Office is fully staffed. Those numbers for Otero County Sheriff's Office, their pay on that is effective July first, two thousand twenty-three. That's what they're going to. Las Cruces, they, they start out at twenty. They're one officer down right now, and that's, that's as of about a week and a half ago. This is our salary comparison to Otero County Sheriff's Office beginning July first. You'll see our certified, or how their steps are. They, they start out uncertified as a deputy one. Once they're certified, they go to a deputy two. They have, after a year of that, they hit another level of deputy two or lateral. Then they have five steps at deputy three. They're maxing out at twenty-nine seventy-five. If you add the years up, it's basically ten years. Our ten-year officer right now is at twenty-five sixty-eight. Beginning July one, we're four dollars and seven cents an hour behind them. Everything in red on the right is what we're in the hole. This is just to the sheriff's office, and this is where we've seemed to have lost most of our people to as of late. The other issue with this is the county has filed for a COPS grant, so come November timeframe roughly, they will have six new positions. That's partially funded by the county, partially funded by the COPS grant, and it's one of those grants where over a period of time, the county has to assume those positions. It's only, they only pay for it for, I want to say it's three years. And it's not fully funded from my understanding. I think it's a fifty-fifty, or there's a certain percentage that they have to pay on those. This is our call comparison to Otero County Sheriff's Office. Again, calls for service. In twenty-one, you can see that we took roughly seven thousand more calls, over two thousand more arrests, four hundred crashes, and pulled thirty-seven hundred more reports, basically. In twenty-two, we've taken almost ten thousand more calls than they have, thirteen hundred arrests. The numbers just kind of speak for themselves on what we're doing. And I'm not bashing the sheriff's office by no means. It's just showing a comparison on what these people behind me do and their pay versus what the sheriff's office does and their pay. This is my proposal that I've proposed to the city, Acting City Manager. This is the, the pay scale proposed, where we would max our officers out in ten years, our sergeants at six, our lieutenants at four, the deputy chief in chief at three. The current budget fiscal year twenty-four is four point one million. If this were to be approved, we would go up to, it'd go up to four point nine, an increase of about eight hundred forty-six thousand. That includes the eleven vacant positions right now in that number also.
Eleven budgeted.
Eleven budgeted. We have, we have, we're supposed to have fifty-eight, but because we've been short for so long, just to do accurate budgeting, we've taken ten out of there. So, we're, or nine out of there. So, we're down to forty, forty-nine budgeted positions. Should we increase that? You'll see, we will be out of the red and into the white, with the exception of starting pay. I'm not too worried about starting pay. Looking across the state, it's, it's pretty accurate around the twenty dollar an hour mark where guys are starting out at, and then once they're certified, that's where the, the pay starts at. And they're talking, you're talking about a seven dollar an hour increase from being uncertified to certified. And since January two thousand nineteen, it's just a typo. Ignore that, please. The cannabis tax would be removed from retention incentives. We brought that forth, tried that. We've lost some out of that, decided maybe we need to go on with some large sign-on bonuses. Talking with the deputy chief in Las Cruces. Last year, they went with large sign-on bonuses and went with their large pay raise. Las Cruces has two hundred two officers now. We've, we've spoke in depth about a contract that they would have to sign to receive these. This wouldn't be just, here, here's your money and walk away. There would be some teeth with this, and the, the city would go after these folks who do not fulfill their commitment. Can I discuss what we talked about in the contract kind of? So, that would be, they would have to fulfill at least half of their commitment before we even started prorating this for them. So, you can see, uncertified comes in at ten thousand dollars when they're hired, when they're off probation, which is a one-year probation. They would get five more. If they want to commit to five years, it's a ten and ten, and certified's ten and ten for a three-year. Their probation ends at six months, and then you got a, a five-year at a fifteen and a ten. So, the, the retention incentive that we're using the cannabis tax for would be taken away, and it would be put towards this to try to boost some, some levels up above my pay grade.
So, I had asked Evelyn, and this is actually in our budgeting, so what exactly does a point one two five or an eighth tax produce? This is the last five years up until April, I think. I can't see, of what it produces. So, if we, if you do approve this tax, it would cover what Chief Denton is proposing. In addition, it would also cover those ten unbudgeted positions should we get fully staffed. This is what you approved during the budget process, just to show that we can't do anything significant now. As it is, at the projected ending budget in the general fund, where all the officers are paid from, we'll have a projected ending balance of about one point four million at the end of next year. So, we can't really do anything significant as it is now without cutting back services from the rest of the city, which would more than likely be in the quality of life areas.
Does anybody have any questions?
I kind of do.
Commissioner Riden?
I see your sign-on and your sign-on bonuses and stuff for new officers, and, I mean, I agree with those to some extent, but what are we doing to retain the existing officers we have? Do we have anything in the, in the plan to retain our existing?
Right now, they're, they would all receive a very significant pay raise. If you look at the pay scale.
Six or seven dollars an hour.
Yeah. A lot of, most of them would receive a very significant pay raise. Some wouldn't be, some wouldn't be very much. Some, you're probably talking two or three dollars an hour, maybe. The majority of them would receive, I mean, it's, you're, if you take the budgeted positions out and you just figure what they're at, it's, you know, we've got eight hundred and forty-six thousand dollars up there. That's, that's quite a bit of money going to that many positions. So, they're, they're going to get a significant pay raise. I, to give you an average, I wouldn't know. I didn't average that. I can get that number for you tomorrow.
You know, this is, since I've been in office since two thousand nine, we've had a problem retaining officers. You know, I mean, it's, it goes up and down. It varies, and I think it's a nationwide problem. The sign-on bonuses, I believe, are a good idea to, to attract new candidates, but there again, we have good employees. What are we going to do? I mean, two to three dollars an hour is, is a pretty good little increase for even five or six, but, you know, getting a twenty, you know, ten thousand dollars right as soon as you're hired, and then another ten thousand after your probation period's over with, that's, that's a big chunk of money.
Well, I, I'm not disagreeing with you. What I would disagree with, one thing you said is it's a shortage across the nation. You're correct. The percentage of our staffing level appears to be much shorter than many departments. Is there, is there a shortage of five or six officers in, in a lot of departments? Absolutely. But you don't hear the twenty. Now, I'm not, I'm talking cities comparable to us. Albuquerque's three hundred and fifty officers short, okay?
There's a million people up there.
Yeah. So, there's, there's, there's a difference, but if you figure the percentages of what we're at, and the, the retention thing, so, so it's been no secret, all these people behind me know, I, I really have disagreed with sign-on bonuses. I've said that in front of you guys. We've tried retention incentives. This is the only thing that we can, that we put our minds together and can think of. We've got to do something large, and we've got to, we've got to try it. It worked in Las Cruces, and I, and I'll go back to Las Cruces. They, they put out large hiring incentives, and they up their pay scale, and look at their staffing.
How long ago did they do that? I mean?
It's been roughly, I want to say it was, it was after our, our, the compensation study went into effect here. It was shortly after that that they got all their staff.
They don't, you know, I don't know what they, what their criteria was or how much they did, but, you know, in a year and a half or two years, when that sign-on bonus deal is met, are they going to see a decrease in their staff when they're allowed to leave? You know what I mean?
I'm sure. I don't know for factual. I'm sure they have some, some kind of commitment with their stuff also. That's the reason we, we've got a three-year, five commitment, three-year, five-year commitment with this. Five-year, you're, you're invested, and I'm not saying people don't leave here after five years, but it.
But if this is an ongoing program, if this, this is not like a one-time thing, this is an ongoing, right? I'm assuming.
Until we reach staffing levels or so.
Till we reach.
Okay, right. I get that, but if we, if, if you reach staffing levels, right, and then, let's say you drop off five officers, are we still offering this to try to attract? Does that make sense?
We will offer it until we're fully staffed. So, if we get fully staffed and we drop off, we'll look at it at that point.
So, Las Cruces, they're, I just went on their website. I had looked at this before. For them, they're requiring a three-year commitment.
Do they have a minimum that you have to serve? Do they have a minimum that you have to serve and then it's prorated at that point?
That, it doesn't, that I don't know. It doesn't say on the website.
You know what I mean? We just did the salary study, what, six, eight months ago or a year ago? I don't, I don't remember how long it's been.
And I, I will say, we decided on something that, like, a little bit unique in that. So, say someone does the three-year commitment, right? You would have to serve 18 months in order for the prorated stuff to kick in, right? So, if you leave on month 17, you have to pay back that whole, you know, $20,000, okay? And then, we broke it down to quarterly is what we, we did. So, and I wish I had my notes. Unfortunately, I don't have it. But then, like, each quarter, it gets deducted like $2,000 or something like that. Depend, depending on which contract they would choose, whether it's a three-year or a five-year. And it also determines whether you're uncertified or certified, like, all those. And so, if you leave between quarters, it reverts back to the first quarter, the last quarter you met.
What about, like, you mentioned, you know, on the uncertified officers, we get one that takes the $10,000 bonus. They go to the academy and they don't, they don't cut it. Then, I guess they get to pay all that back to us?
Absolutely.
Voluntary or involuntary termination?
We've had to get, I've had to get rid of some for their personal conduct. And you can ask all these people who have interviewed with me. I, I don't recall terminating anyone really for their work ethic. I've terminated people all due to personal conduct. And, and honestly, they're, it's, some of us are hiring because we're, we're kind of to a point where if you walk through the door with a heartbeat and you don't have any felony arrests, hey, man, put a uniform on. So, I mean, that's kind of.
Terrifying. Okay.
That's kind of where, where we've been. And I think some of them wash out over time.
But it doesn't apply to any of you, right? No. Okay.
Other questions is, is, you know, you've stated that the eighth of a percent will generate 1., I'm going to get to that slide. Hold on. It was like 1.1 million?
Right.
Approximately 1.2, yeah.
Back about 10 years ago or whatever, an eighth of a percent used to generate around 750,000 in, in the city of Almagordo. If we have an economic downturn, which it kind of looks like we're heading for that in the worldwide economy, will we be able to sustain this pay increase based off of this tax that we're looking at passing to fund this?
So, like?
We have to look at the large picture of us up here and you guys as well. We've got to look at the whole picture, not just this piece of it. If that makes sense, you know what I mean?
So, yeah, if there's an economic downturn, we'll do what we've always done as we step back, pivot, and start looking at every area, which would always include anything funded from the general fund. And I also just wanted to just emphasize that with the sign-on bonuses, it's a lot of money. We are definitely going to go after if you don't meet your commitment to the city of Almagordo. And when I say go after, it's not just invoicing them. It's a, we will file with the court and you will have to pay us back, or we will garnish your checks in future employment.
Do we know how much? I know last year, what was it, 300 and something thousand from the cannabis money? But do we have any idea where we're at?
It's been steady at about 17,000 a month.
So, what's adequate to a year?
About 300,000.
About 300,000. That's all we're generating off of 20 cannabis stores in Almagordo?
Well, like, we've discussed numerous times, you're, just because you open a store doesn't mean we're all going to go hop to it. You're kind of just fighting for the same consumers. So, at this moment, it's been pretty consistent at 17,000.
Maybe that's the problem. Maybe it's because we have 20 cannabis stores.
Is it the state that remits that back to us? Do we know whether we're getting our fair share of the cannabis money?
It's always a question.
Please.
I can guarantee you, we're probably selling more than $17,000 a month in tax money.
Okay. But with all due respect, there's a lot of cash business there, so.
Actually, I've seen those guys. The way, you know, they've helped permit some of that stuff. And the way they have to document everything, there's not a way for them to, to siphon cash out of that business. It's very, very difficult. The state has made it very difficult. But anyway, I just, I worry about us being able to sustain that wage. I'm not against it, but.
No, we always worry about sustaining anything. I think that, that is.
I don't want to give a pay raise today and then a year from now.
I mean, I think if the county can do it, we can certainly do it. So. I said, if the county can do it, we can certainly do it.
They've got a little larger budget than we have. So, there's this.
The other thing, Commissioner Riden, is the, let's say this works and we, we are fully staffed. We, we do take that cannabis money and, and, you know, I obviously can't make that decision. But I would say turn that over and put it in towards the salaries to assist with that.
To assist with the offset.
And you wouldn't do the, the sign-on bonuses anymore if you can stay up in your staffing level wise. Those would go away and you would just use that money to assist with the salaries.
My other question too is, you know, you said we generated 1.1, 1.2 million. And then, we're going to be spending 847,000 of it. What are we going to do with that additional revenue?
So, as we mentioned, right now, we have 11 vacant budgeted positions, but we have 10 additional non-budgeted positions. So, the 849 only includes the 11, not the additional 10. So, in a perfect world, and we're hoping this works and we get those additional 10, that would cover those additional 10 positions. We've also talked about.
It's another 200, 250,000, 290,000?
No. And we've also talked about, should we have excess? We would have to put it towards PSAP because PSAP has been a big money suck. And I, I, for the greater good, it's, it's beneficial to our citizens. But we're paying more than we did with, with having our own dispatch. We recently went to the budget. We had the board meeting, approved the budget. And it's about 250,000 more than what we're paying now. And that's just year one. The contract clearly states that it will go off call volume, so.
They wanted more than that. That's what they got. But they wanted more.
And so, if we go off a call volume, that money's going to go up. The priority, of course, is officer pays. I, I do think that the 10 extra positions that aren't budgeted is going to be a big.
This is often, this is on PSAP, not really on this issue. But have they been contributing? The state been giving us the money for PSAP that we were promised?
So, the county is the fiscal agent. I believe that they have been producing, I mean, they have been giving it to the county. Our part is just what we agreed to pay to put into PSAP.
Because we knew it was going to cost more than what we were currently spending before we went there. So.
Correct.
I say, I just, this is a huge deal. And it's a, you know, we just dropped an eighth of a percent, getting our tax rate back down, you know? I started in office, we were at like seven and a quarter, seven and a half. And here we are at eight, eight and an eighth. We just got it down an eighth. And now, we're bumping it right back up.
I agree. Me and Evelyn stood in front of you against the lodgers' tax. We don't like taxes. We don't take it lightly.
In the event that we get into some trouble and we need to pass, we only have another additional eighth to pass, correct?
So, I have that number. Just give me one second.
We're utilizing the hold harmless essentially. Is that what we're using?
So, as of today, we have point two, sorry, we have .2375% that we, that the commission can pass without going to voters and an additional .3125% that we can take to referendum. So, total, I mean, .075 total is .3125. I apologize.
So, we have an additional eighth that we can pass after this?
That commission can pass. And then, we have additional that we can take to referendum.
Roughly three eighths that we can take to the voters. How come we didn't mention this in budget hearings? Just to, I'm just wondering.
Because this has been a conversation for about two years. And we haven't brought anything to commission. We are at a point that the county just did the $3 increase. They might be getting six additional positions. They might have three people retiring. We're at a point, like the state have, we're at the point where it feels necessary. And it also feels like the right time because of the state taking the, taking it down to that one eighth percent. It's, I mean, I, I don't think we've hid the fact that we've been having trouble. That's what the whole incentive was. We, Chief Denton didn't put a proposal for the cannabis tax because we were still in discussions at that time with Brian. So.
Does anybody else have any questions? Anybody?
This mainly will affect the lower-level staff, correct? It's not so much.
This, this is like you see across the country. Sorry, this is what you see across the country. Everybody's front-loading everything to get people in. And, and you can call it a bidding war if you want. And that might be what it is. But, I mean, and, and it's no disrespect to anybody. But, and, and the city's going to, this is a cheap thing to me. You're talking a million dollars to pay these people and get staffing in here.
Hopefully.
And so, if I could, real quick, so, I asked because it frustrates me. And I've been asking Chief Denton for several, several months now. So, and I, no disrespect to the county, but I, I understand why they were increasing. But I asked over and over, what happens when they take all of our officers? It feels like they're sabotaging us. And I know that's not true, but that's what it feels like from our perspective. And we're either going to pay our officers or we're going to pay the county their rage weight because they will help us for a period of time because we are in the county, but they're not going to do it for free.
Kind of obligated to.
They're not obligated to. They're obligated, the sheriff can charge the city a contractual agreement and make the city pay. That's why I'm saying this, $1 million?
We're still Otero County.
We are.
We have looked at this.
Not that I disagree with.
It's not free, though.
I've had this conversation with the sheriff. And they, actually in Tolosa, he provided Tolosa with a number because they also went to him. And it's not just because they're in Otero County, he'll, he's helping them out right now.
How is this going to bring our wages in comparison to what, like, the border patrol are paying?
Not even close.
Not even close. Is that where we've lost a lot of people as well? No?
We've lost people all over the place. We've lost most of the people that we've had leave. I want to, I think we've lost 13 officers to the sheriff's department alone. But we've lost to other agencies. We've lost to Holloman Air Force Base.
On their exit interviews, have they given, I, I think we've asked this in the past, but have they given reasons? Is, is it all money or is it?
It's, it's, on their exit interviews, there's a few that put money down. Some of it's quality of life stuff. Some of it's family stuff. It, it varies. It's just, it's all over the place.
Yeah, but that, that, that all ties in because if, if we're down officers that are working a lot of overtime, I'm assuming.
Well, but what I was going to say to, to that is, sorry to interrupt you.
No, it's okay.
If you pay people where they can't afford to leave, they're not going to go.
Right.
That's the bottom line.
They're going to stick with it a little longer because the pay is better.
Absolutely.
I say, we've got to look at the bigger picture is, is when the economic downturn does come, can we sustain what we raise this? Because once we giveth, we can't taketh away. You know what I mean?
I'm, I'm not saying it's, it's.
That's where it puts us in a difficult situation where we've got to be very, very careful. I've been here, when, in 2008, when, when that hit us. I was here in '09 and, and 2010 when it finally hit Almagordo, hit the rest of the world in '08. But, and, and it was very difficult. You know, it sucks having to go in and furlough people and.
I was here.
You were here. You remember, you know? It was very difficult on the commission and staff on the upper level as far as budgeting goes. So. Not that I'm against this. I agree. They need to be paid for their service. And, and right now, a lot of businesses are overworking the employees they have because we don't have enough. And, and that's the case here with DPS. It's in fire and actually public works, all of them, all of the different departments. So.
I think, I think we're in a much better, I think if you look at our budget, and I understand what you're saying about 2008, 2009. But I, I think, when I look at the budget, and, and I've looked back at that too, I think we're in a better position now.
We'll see.
I, I think fiscally, we're more responsible now. And I'm not dissing any former commissions, but I think we're pretty responsible with what we have. And.
And I think we're also very conservative.
I think incredibly conservative. I love that, yes. And, and I think, you know, the county is increasing it. And you're, you know, if an economic downturn's going to happen, it's going to happen on, to, to both organizations, right? To both, both the county and the city. And so, they're going to feel what we're feeling. And obviously, it was important enough to them to do that regardless of the risk. And so, I think, when I look at these numbers, and we're almost double, well, maybe not almost double, but certainly 50, 60, 70% more in some cases at, for calls and arrests and crashes and all this other stuff compared to the sheriff's department. It, we should all be alarmed about that. And I understand that we're in the city limits, but we should all be concerned about that. My concern is always burnout. And that's why I mentioned all the overtime. Because if, if that's what it takes just to make enough money. I, I mean, I remember when I was first elected and there wasn't even a union contract and hadn't been for 18 months. I'm sure you remember that time as well. And I had commissioners that said, well, if you look at benefits and that kind of thing, they really make this much money. And I'm thinking, you can't take your benefits and make a house payment. You can't take your benefits and make a car payment. You have to have money to do that. And I think that that's where, you know, some, in the past, where it's been kind of twisted a little bit because they've, they've looked at everything. My concern is, we've tried everything else. We need to do something. And this is a good time to do it because it is a wash. I get it that she took a tax away. I know, I was shocked too. But this is a good time to do it. And I think in the, in the grand scheme of things, that one eighth of a percent, I, I understand, you know, mentally how it sounds to add a tax. But I think one eighth of a percent is not, is not that big of a, not that big of a deal. Not for something like this. So.
Want to add just one last thing. The county has talked in open meetings about increasing the tax because the governor has done it. If they do that and they keep raising the taxes on the officers, it will be catastrophic for our department.
They can't raise theirs. They've already taken all of their three eights.
Yeah, they don't.
They don't do, we don't do eights anymore. The, the state has changed the whole outfit of the way it looks.
They took all of their hold harmless all at one time.
But the state has unrestricted some of these. So, it's not about, they do have the ability to pass them. I'm just through, I think it was House Bill, whatever, in 2019, that they redid the whole tax structure. So, they gave the, they gave a max that the commissions can do without going to voters. And they changed that whole one-eighth amount.
Does anybody else have any questions? Okay. Do we want to call for a vote on this? Somebody want to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve ordinance 1679.
Okay. I have a motion from Commissioner Burnett. Do I have a second?
Oh, second.
A second from Commissioner McDonald. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Stephen Burnett.
Aye.
Josh Riden.
Aye.
Sharon McDonald.
Aye.
Dusty Wright.
Aye.
Susan Payne.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Okay. Congratulations, guys.
I will just say real quick, I am incredibly happy about this. And I am, I'm about as conservative as I come. And I'm not ashamed of it at all. But I think in this case, it's warranted. And so, congratulations to all of you. And I am hoping that we will see the fruits of this. So, congratulations. Okay, we're going to move on to item 11. Appointments to boards and committees. I have to admit, I did not really look at this very well. I'm sorry. I was too busy studying everything else. We have the mayor's committee on aging. There's currently two vacancies. And we have one application from Shirley, is it Dakin? Dakin? I don't know. Is she here tonight? No? Okay. And if reappointed, this would be her third term. And if nobody has any objections, I will appoint her to that. Okay? Parks and Rec has one vacancy. We have one application from Adam Montorio. If appointed, this will be his first term. And if nobody has any objections, I'm going to appoint him to that. Okay? Almagordo Public Library Board, we currently have one vacancy. We have one application from John Davis. And if appointed, this will be his first term. And I will go ahead and appoint him to that if we don't have. And I will go ahead and appoint him to that if we don't have any objections, okay? And as always, a little PSA, if you are watching online and you are interested in being on one of our boards or committees, there is a website, well, you can go on our website, I'm sure there's a link there that you can click on and find out more information about that. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn into executive closed session in compliance with 10-151 to discuss a possible land swap of real property located at 1402 College Avenue. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion from Commissioner Reardon, do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Mayor Pro Tem Wright, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed?
Mayor, this is a roll call vote.
Is it?
It is.
Should be.
Does not say that, okay.
It's in real small print.
Does it say it?
Executive session.
Oh, it's not on my agenda, I apologize for that, okay? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Stephen Burnett?
Aye.
Josh Reardon?
Aye.
Sharon McDonald?
Aye.
Dusty Wright?
Aye.
Susan Payne?
Aye, motion passes 5-0, we are adjourned.
HR or finance?
I don't know, I got one quick question, can we get the air fixed before the next meeting?
I have been texting them all during the meeting. Nothing makes me cravier than getting hot.
I don't know how all these officers sat here this whole meeting.
I, 100%.
Because I got a raise, so.
I have been on my phone trying to get it.